I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Girbaugh, Roth, Rhodes, Cybo Koenig, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city superintendent engineer Ruble, excuse me, wastewater superintendent Skull, and treasurer Bennett. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. There are a few additions and corrections to the agenda this evening. The first has been brought to my attention by our city clerk, and it appears on the consent agenda, the first item, C-dash minutes. The minutes from our special council meeting of December 17th were not included in the packet, so it's her preference that we review and approve those as submitted at our first meeting in January. So that motion will be modified to read to approve the minutes of the December 7th, 2015 regular meeting. And then we'll strike the additional verbiage. Please note that we will have to insert some details in unfinished business item 15-226. And then I would like to add one, actually two things to the discussion portion of our agenda. The first is under the last item that reads HB 5016, HB 4423, HB 4427, and we're going to add SB 571. And there's a letter on the dais in front of you dated December 22nd, 2015 regarding that piece of legislation. I also note that our state representative Gretchen Driscoll is here, and I believe she'll be talking about each one of those bills during the public comment period. And then finally, I'd like to add a new item under the discussion portion of our agenda. It will be the last item, and it is, you can just entitle it "special presentation." Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? If not, the chair would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tarr, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say avert, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. So we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Other citizen comments?
This isn't on the agenda, so I don't know if it's...
Then you need to wait till the end.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for opportunity to talk about our House bills. Some are pending, but one, as you mentioned, 571 is out of the House and waiting for the governor's approval, and I think we're all hoping it doesn't pass, that he detoes it, but we'll see. Anyhow, to start with 5016, that's the bill that is talking about refunding the cable right-ofways. This is an issue that's actually in a committee that I'm on, the Communications and Technology Committee, and it's a bill to require local governments. And Todd and I have talked a little bit about it, and I've been working with the Michigan Municipal League. It is out of committee. It is a bill that basically requires municipalities to end road commissions, basically the governing body that is responsible for the right-ofway, to reimburse local cable or broadband providers if they do not give sufficient notice to that provider, if that facility has to be relocated, meaning the line. And I guess this came out of somebody, somewhere, somewhere around our lovely state, took it, didn't give sufficient notice, and so it's become a complaint now. And it started with the smaller telecom providers, the group called TAM, and it's basically, it's not a bill that I supported, I voted no out of committee. Originally, it was a really, really bad bill. It was introduced by Representative Lighthizer, who's from the Hillsdale area, and he's a freshman, and he's done a lot of work to try to make it better. So it's a little bit better in that currently, the way it's currently worded, it's, if you don't give notice to the providers within a year of having to do the work. So in other words, if your project's here for the next year, you would have to give notice to your provider, to the providers that are impacted by having to move the line. And if you don't, you would have to reimburse them for the costs. So we, there was a couple of bills that were introduced. One that did pass was, I'm trying to remember, the one that passed, I introduced one, oh, the one that passed was what was considered emergencies or act of God, because as the league, and I argued, coming from local government, first of all, we don't have any money, and second of all, this is not, usually this is a for-profit, and I think that the bolt decision, this could be, come underneath a bolt decision, which is, you know, causing all the citizens to pay for somebody that's specifically benefiting. So right now, this is, a commercial business has this line, they're making profits on it, they're charging fees back to the consumer, their customers, but the local government would have to pay these costs. So we made a couple of arguments. One was, you know, if there was, you know, a water main break or something that happened on a road and we had to move, is it okay? Do you want me to stop?
No, unless there's objection from the dais, since you're providing us with a very helpful and timely legislative update, we'd like to continue.
Okay, sorry. I mean, I'm just trying to give you the whole background because...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
It did come out of committee, but we did, we had several hearings, and it finally came out of committee last week. But, so one of the questions that we brought up was what happens if there's a water main break or some kind of significant, you know, physical problem on a road, and, you know, you want to put that money, transfer it from another road to this road, and you have to get that provider to move their lines, that shouldn't be, you shouldn't have to be punished for that as a municipality. So they, we were able, Representative Price was able to introduce that as an amendment that would be, like, considered an act of God or emergency, would be, locals would not have to reimburse the provider. I tried to introduce a windfall bill. We worked, again, I worked pretty closely with John Lamachia, and he's been working really hard for Michigan Municipal League, for you guys, on this bill and a lot of other ones. But we tried to also introduce, so sometimes you get a grant, you don't hear about it, or like when error happened, that we got some funds that we, you know, within a year, you might get some funds that you didn't have programmed, right, into your road improvement project. So I tried to introduce that bill, it didn't pass, and then I also tried to introduce an amendment to allow, so I think what's good for one should be good for the other, and so if providers are, the telecom providers are slowing down a project, which that has been known to happen, and you have to pay extra costs as a municipality, then the providers should have to reimburse the costs to the municipality, so I tried to introduce that as an amendment for that. That was definitely not very happy, that didn't go at all. But I would say, it did come out of committee, all the Republicans voted for it, the Democrats, I'm the only, I was the only no, there's a couple of people that passed and one that voted for it. Since I came out last week on the floor, I think there might be an opportunity, it's been postponed, obviously, it didn't go through all the way through the House, there is an opportunity maybe for that amendment that I introduced about the windfall piece. That's also, we're working on that, another, one of my fellow Democrats is working with the chair. And then we're also looking at maybe trying to get it down to six to nine months' notice. So those are two other things that might be added, because there are, on both sides of the aisle, some struggles with the way it's currently written, and I know there's been a lot of pushback, like I said, MML, MTA, MTA is a township association, and the county road commission has also been pushing back really hard on the bill. So hopefully, keep you posted if you want, but probably what'll happen is there'll be some amendments on the floor to get it out of the House and over to the Senate. The other bills I'm not as familiar with, I will tell you, because they're coming out of transportation, they're kind of sitting there. This is the speed limit bills that I know we all have a lot of angst about. They were introduced last session, and they didn't get out of committee. Currently, the bills are, the MDOT, as a matter of fact, there's, I have some substitutes, I can give this to Todd, and he can pass it out to you later, but basically, there's been some substitutes for the speed limits and things like that. But they're still, MDOT's still opposed to it. There's quite a large group of entities that are opposed to it, but my understanding is that it's not coming out of committee, and that's why we haven't seen it on the floor yet, so it's still sitting in committee. But I know that that's something that basically takes away, again, local control, and I also, there's a lot of groups like Peak, John Waterman's group, some of our pedestrian and bike groups, and MDOT and MML are all opposed to it, because it would actually have, could potentially have a lot of risk for pedestrians and bicyclists and non-motorized traffic, and I know everybody in Celine with a non-motorized plan is interested in that. So I do have, like, a House fiscal analysis, or a House analysis of the substitutes. So I tried to call some of the people on the committee to see where it stands, but it didn't make it out of session or out of the committee last term. I don't think it's going to, but I'd be happy if I hear a movement. I did put a call into the chair. We're on break this week, so I don't know if people are out of town. And then finally, 571. So that's kind of, that was a bill, it's a quite an interesting experience. We did have a bipartisan bill, Senate Bill 571, that came over. We had actually supported it in a bipartisan manner, and it got, a lot of things were added to it, including some of the things that I'm sure you've heard about in the news, and I think the Michigan Municipal League has talked to you. I know the school boards are very concerned about it. I think any local elected body is going to be really concerned about if they're trying to get any participation by citizens. But basically, what happened late Wednesday night, I would kind of call it a travesty, is we had a 12-page bill that became a 53-page bill, I think, within 10 minutes, and we actually don't, didn't have any conversation on it. It was pretty much vehicle bill, and all of us who had voted for the original 571 had to pull our names off of it, because we didn't know what was in it. But it's my understanding at this point that there are some things in it, like this, the inability for local governments to put out within the 60 days of voting for a ballot initiative. You can't put out publicly what, using, you can't put out publicly what that proposal entails, which is a huge, you know, problem, because if you're doing kind of any projects, your citizens need to know what's going on, and a lot of people don't really know what's happening or even follow it till within 60 days. So I do see it as a big problem. It's on the governor's, it's going to the governor. It came, it was late at night, it was like 10 o'clock at night, we tried to block it, but we couldn't, you know, our rules were suspended, so it's a whole nother story. But, so basically, it didn't, we weren't able to block it, and then it went over to the Senate, and they passed it in the Senate. So it's waiting for the governor's signature, so I would recommend, if you want further information on it, I could have my staff get something together, but it is waiting for the governor's signature. So I would recommend that you send a letter to the governor saying that you're opposed to it.
That's right.
And I know, I believe that the league is also doing something to that effect, that it was, personally, I felt it was a real travesty, because it is changing very significantly a lot of pieces of campaign, campaigning, and campaign finance, and actually limiting access, I think, for our voters in a lot of ways, and increasing access for money, and I think we have a big problem there, and that's personal, but anyhow. So that's basically the facts on 571. So that would be something, if you're opposed to it, to reach out to the governor and make sure that he knows that you're opposed to it. Do you guys have any questions?
Just for your information, Representative, we're hoping, there's a letter, excuse me, that was drafted this weekend, that we're going to review as a discussion item, and then if there's agreement, I'd like everyone to sign it, including our council members elect, that would urge the governor to veto 571.
Well, I'm hoping that happens, because I don't think, I think a lot of people voted on it and didn't really know what was in it. That's kind of what my observation was, but who knows for sure? So we'll see. Do you guys have any questions about anything I just said, or anything else that's going on?
Any questions for Representative Driscoll? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Question on the cable right-ofway bill. Do you know how specific that notice has to be to the cable company?
Well, it's written notice.
But can it say, "We expect that in next year, we're going to widen X street, and therefore that's your notice"?
I, well, we, I mean, I actually was trying, I called Ryan Bucket Watts, I was trying to get the TAM group, because, you know, we have a long-range transportation plan, and I was like, "Why, you guys, this is passed, you know, we know where we're funding the next three years around southeast, you know, around the state, that's a requirement to get federal dollars, and everybody does a transportation plan." So I say, "Why can't you just use that report that comes out? Why do, why do we have to go to all of this extra layers of work and costs to the city?" And they thought that was too complicated. It wasn't easily accessible, that it was a whole, like, it would be, you know, Telegraph Road, so maybe their stuff was in it or not. But, so, they don't really have a good definition of written notification, but I would, I think that this, you know, it's an opening can of worms for me. I also brought up another point that I think is really problematic, is this is one utility in the right-ofway. We have multiple utilities in the right-ofway, and I just foresee the rest of the utility saying, "Well, you're doing it for cable, then why can't you do it for gas and electric?" And, you know, I mean, I just, I think it's a huge problem down the road, so, and I know that MML, like I said, has been working really hard on that, so. But I would just say, yeah, you can send everybody a letter saying, "These are your road projects," and I would expect that people are doing that anyhow. You know, I, like I said, I think it's a small, I try to find out who's causing the problem, but this is one of those laws that are being, is being made for a very small group of people that are causing the problem, and it's impacting everybody else. So, any other questions?
Anything else?
Okay, thanks for your time, I'm sorry I took more info.
No, 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 I appreciate it.
Okay.
Additional citizen comments, please.
Good evening. My name's Paul Borger, I'm a resident of the city of Celine and a taxpayer, and I'm here tonight to share some comments regarding the attorney renewal contract issue that is on the agenda for this evening. I reviewed what information was publicly available, mostly through the Celine post, thank you, and I did issue some communication to the entire Celine leadership team here, of which I received one reply. Thank you, Brian, I appreciate your response. Couple key concerns here is that we look at Dickinson Wright being the primary service provider, is asking for a 12.2% increase in their retainer, right up front for a three-year contract, not stepped over the three years, but 12.2% upfront. Add to that an 8.1% increase in their hourly rate, which totals out to about a 20% on a level-loaded basis. In addition to that, they're looking for a 46% reduction in the base time block, from 40 hours to 26 hours per subject that they intend to deal with. So what was $185 per hour over 40 hours is now $200 an hour for anything over 26 hours. So the significance of that impact, taking some, just some average numbers that I used as an estimate, could stand the potential for an upwards of 50% increase in Dickinson Wright's fees to the city this year, recognizing that we're going into a contract negotiation here. The other one, Campbell Hill, I believe it's Campbell Hill's the other name, Carter, excuse me, Carter Hill, is looking at 28.6 increase, 28.6% increase in their retainer, and I don't have any details on, other than their hourly rate going from $185 to $200 per hour. Interestingly, if you look at the 120,000, or the 106,890 2015 retainer compared to the 120,000 2016 retainer that's being proposed, at $185, that equates to 577 hours of guaranteed payment, the equivalent of 72 days, or 14 weeks, if they do nothing, they're paid. Going to 2016 at $120,000, at $200 an hour, that's the equivalent of 600 hours worth of work, 75 days, or 15 weeks per year, paid if they do nothing. Now granted, they're not going to do nothing, they're going to do something. But that's a very significant baseline that we as taxpayers and you as the leadership team are going to endure for, depending on what we get out of these people. I think those numbers are very concerning and should be very concerning to the city, especially that when I look at the average 2013, 14, 15 legal expenses for the city, the three-year average is $139,500. The 2016 budget for legal expenses for the city of Celine, as I understand it, is $138,000. Doesn't even cover the three-year average. I guess my time is up. I'm greatly concerned about that. I hope you are as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, we appreciate your comments. There are additional citizen comments on agenda items. No, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Mayor, I'd just like to remove C-15-90, just for an explanation.
All right. So C-15-90 will now be the first item under new business. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Girbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth, I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say avert, the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on then to the item that Mr. Girbaugh requested be removed from the consent agenda, which is C-15-90. Oh, excuse me, my apologies, we have to do unfinished business first. Sorry about that, Mr. Girbaugh. Unfinished business item 15-224 will be first. This is Vanessa Court Street Dedication and Acceptance of Public Streets. This is a series of two motions. As you recall, this was postponed at our last meeting and is now appearing verbatim on this agenda. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 1st, 2015 memo from city engineer, city superintendent engineer Ruble, excuse me, and to approve and accept or not to accept the dedication of Vanessa Court and the Bennett Street Right-ofway as public streets. And I would recommend, first, just a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
So moved.
Thank you, just to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
Just to acknowledge.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Mrs. Dillon be the second on that one. Mr. Ruble, do you care to go over your memo of December 1st?
Same one, that was at the last meeting.
Yeah, there may be some questions that have developed in council members' minds in the two weeks since our last meeting.
I believe we asked for additional information, that we have not...
No, I don't have any additional report on it.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I didn't have any additional new information on that.
Okay, there was some additional information we asked to be gathered.
They asked for Act 51 monies.
Oh, I had put that in an email. I thought I was going to cover it. $380 per year.
$380 per year, if this street was included?
Correct, because it's, it's short, it's a short street, and it's a local street and has a lower ratio factor.
And the other was provided in the memorandum from city attorney, referenced their opinion as far as, excuse me, as far as their opinion, that an additional agreement would not be required because of the warranty that was talked about, as well as just general tort law that makes them responsible if they were to damage the street for whatever reason. But again, I mean, we could certainly work with the city's attorney's office to work with the developer and attempt to get something different, but again, as you hopefully have read from the city attorney's opinion that, with the current laws in place, that their position is it's not required.
Mr. Rhodes, did you have a question or comment, sir?
Yeah, just want to make a comment here on the city attorney's memo. The statement in that next-to-last paragraph is, "If it negligently damages the street." I am anticipating that there probably, most likely will be some damage to that street anyway, just from the act of constructing the houses that are going there, and cement trucks, and excavators, and everything else that happens, so I'm still of the opinion that $380 a year isn't worth the risk.
Okay. Additional questions for staff? I can tell you, and with all due respect, and I, Mr. Ruble, I appreciate your work on this issue, I appreciate you discussing it and including it on a council agenda. My peer, my position, excuse me, mirrors that of Mayor Protem Rhodes. I don't, I don't feel it's pertinent nor appropriate at this time to dedicate the street, so that's how I'll be acting and voting this evening. Anything further? Mr. Girbaugh, please.
Just a question regarding the document that was already been signed and registered for the county. That was just for the condominium agreement? The one that you indicated in your memo, it says something that the developers already signed, the dedication of land for public street purposes with the attorney. Second paragraph of your December 1st, 2015, what type of commitment did that put us into?
Which paragraph, Mr. Girbaugh?
It'd be the second paragraph, it talks about, but it's the second page of this document, it says dedication of land for public street purposes, and it's already recorded with the County of Washington.
That's the development agreement. It was approved by council before we got this far in the dedication of the street.
If I may...
Please.
I mean, this is the same process that we followed for, I think, most every, if not every, except for Huntington Woods Phase 1, in that those were initially, excuse me, private streets, but for those that are intended to be public streets from the beginning, I believe we filed the same or similar procedures that we, that staff has been proposing.
Correct. This would be the first time we ever did not accept dedication of the street when it was completed. From the last 28 years I've been here, we've agreed to accept the street when it was completed. So it could be a public street for public use by the residents.
Mr. Rhodes?
And I understand what you're saying, and there is some value, of course, to precedent, and on the other hand, one needs to look at the current standard, status of things, and if we accept these streets now, not only are we running the risk that they may be damaged and we'll have to do some work on them sooner than we would like, but we're going to actually lose money plowing and salting that street over a normal winter anyway. $380 a year is not going to go very far for street maintenance, in my opinion.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Tahar, please.
Yes, and so, in practical terms, assuming that there is damage, what advantage does not accepting the street now give us in that case? What, what, what actual, if any, leverage does, does that give us if we wait to accept the streets until, until later?
Well, if we would, if we would report to council, if we were going to wait till next December to accept them, then we would just report what condition they were in, and the council would decide whether or not they would accept the condition. You know, certainly, past projects, we've had, you know, the same experience. We've had some damage caused, but it generally has been not due to the building construction, it's been due to some equipment in the road hitting the curb, and contractors, you know, always perform the repairs unrequested. They've even repaired sewers when requested. After last meeting, we hear we accepted the water and sewer main, well, in the meantime, that could break. You know, but we've had contractors even come back and repair them at their cost, even though we accept them, because most contractors are of good character and good standing and are responsible.
Please, if you have a follow-up.
And what was our experience with Torwood?
Well, we did, the only damage there, I believe, was one curb section, and then Mr. Thurman had his contractor come out and replace it. I think it was hit when their loader was out there unloading some equipment. In that case, they were pretty expedient in replacing the broken curb.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? And we have a motion in front of us that's been moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt of the December 1st, 2015 memo from city superintendent engineer Ruble. If there's no additional discussion on that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say avert, the motion carries unanimously. Is there any interest in offering an additional motion to approve and accept or not to approve the dedication of Vanessa Court and the Bennett Street right-ofways as public streets?
Move to approve and accept.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Tarr to approve and accept, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Discussion. Ms. Tahar, please.
Yes, I am in favor of accepting at this point. I think that the, the opinion from Mr. Smith indicates to me, to my satisfaction, that we have enough protection at this point without adding additional hurdles for the developer to jump through.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Additional discussion?
Here.
Please, Mr. Girbaugh.
What drives the one-year warranty? Could that not have been five years, or two years, or three years?
Mr. Ruble, do you want to comment on that?
The one year's an industry standard for all street projects. All our projects are warranted for a year after they've been constructed. It's more or less the industry standard.
Okay, but usually, in that case, we've already, all the construction's done, we're not necessarily billing a whole subdivision around that road.
Right, but, like, the Harris project, you know, we actually, you know, we made final payment, we paid... final payment. We paid for it 100%. There's the one-year performance and material warranty in place for one year. And we didn't hold back money in that case, but we, you know, we have the bond to hold. I mean, we have the performance bond in its place, so we can give full payment.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Because of the liability issue, which we're identified in this memo, I can kind of see it, but I've also known where we've been in this similar situation and the type of liability and the legal fees, which Mr. Bolger's even, including tonight, cost us significant money to get a $10,000 fix. So even though this says that we have recourse, usually it turns out to be a very expensive recourse.
Any additional comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I was going to make that similar kind of comment. Even though we may have protection under general tort law, the cost of a suit to enforce that protection is going to far exceed our $380 a year.
Anything further? No? Then it's been properly, we have a motion on the floor to approve and accept that's been moved by Councilwoman Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let's just show hands. I think it failed, but I want to just be clear. Those who voted in favor, thank you. And then those that opposed. Very good. The ayes do not have it, the motion fails. Okay? We'll move on to motion C in the event that someone would like to offer motion. This is Act 51 resolution. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 1st, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, and to approve or not to approve the Act 51 street resolution. Just wanted to offer it. Really wouldn't make any sense, but, okay. Then we'll proceed to unfinished business 15-226. This is US 12 Michigan Avenue Landscape Plan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 16th, 2015 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the recommendation for raised planters as listed. Do you want to, actually, maybe before we entertain a motion, do you want to comment? And I know we have a guest from AECom, formerly URS, here as well. So perhaps we can have it, unless there's objections from the dais, we'll have maybe a discussion on this.
I can make a motion to acknowledge the receipt.
Oh, okay. Why don't we do that, then?
Of the memo.
You want to do a motion, then, Mr. Gearbaugh, just to acknowledge receipt of the December 16th, 2015 memo?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Okay. Mr. Campbell, why don't you begin? And then we'll turn it over to our guest. And then, of course, if anyone else from city staff, Mr. Ruble wishes to make a comment, we would be happy to entertain those thoughts as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. As you all may recall, prior to the December 7th city council meeting, there was a work session to talk about trees and planting materials and colors of the concrete and then the size and shape of the proposed raised planters at the main four. As they are currently proposed, is a half, semicircle shape with the straight edge to the inside of the sidewalk and then the rounded half-circle part to the street side. And with the straight edge about approximately 20 feet long, excuse me. And so, everything except for these raised planters, they were, everything was approved at the seventh, in the seventh meeting by city council. City council wanted to bring this back for further discussion. Since then, Paul Reinhold from AECom put together some drawings to see, have a better understanding of what they would look like. He also provided ones with the dimensions. And so, having done that, Celine Main Street, who I believe Rebecca is here from representing the design team, they met and they actually did a chalk outline of what's proposed. And then you have in there, in your packet, their recommendation. And then, of course, there's other, in Mr. Reinhold's drawings, in elevation drawings, he provided not only the semicircle, but also a flip-flop of the semicircle with the rounded edge towards the sidewalk and the straight edge towards the street, and then rectangular shape as well. So having said that, happy to, I'm sure Paul is here to ask questions or answer questions. And also included in my memo, of course, are kind of Paul's, his rationale when he designed these and why. And for instance, the other, I think the other thing I know in the recommendation from Main Street design team was they didn't like the cultured stone that's proposed on the outside. They would rather have the brick that's on the soldier course of the new, the new brick design for the sidewalk. So having said that, I guess I would, I'm happy to answer any questions, but Paul can come up and I thought is to have some discussion with council and then possibly with Rebecca and representing the design team from Main Street.
Great. Are there any questions for our city manager? No, then Paul, why don't you come forward? And I apologize that I failed to recognize both Rebecca Schneider from Celine Main Street and Riley, Paul and Bobby, Main Street Managing Director. And actually, when Paul, when you're done with your comments, after we've exhausted any questions that we may have as a group, I'll have Riley and Rebecca come up to comment as well, if that's your wish.
Sure.
Thank you for both for being here. Paul, I'm sorry, the floor is yours.
Oh, that's quite all right. I did bring one additional rendering with me this evening.
Please, if you want to, actually, you can hand the packet there or pile it to council, to Cybo Koenig, and we'll make sure they're distributed to the dais.
I did revisit the design of the intersection and taking a look at the actual size of the planters. One of the things I did was push the edge, the straight edge, that's running alongside the sidewalk, back 16 inches. And 16 inches is a, it's a dimension, a brick dimension, so that less bricks would have to be cut, so that we would have a band that would be able to be constructed that wouldn't require any brick cutting. So I pulled that, pulled it away from the sidewalk 16 inches. It matches the 16 inches that we have at the back of the curb then. And then, as far as the overall size of the planter, I used what's called the golden ratio or the golden rectangle. It has been used in design for centuries, dating back into the Roman times, and it's a ratio of 1 to 1.61. The space that I'm left with between the bands of the brick toward the back of the curb is right around 10 feet. So given the ratio, then I've got a 16-foot-long planter. So it's 16 feet long and 10 feet wide. And I've been able to duplicate that in three of the corners. The northwest corner is a little bit narrower than that, though. It's closer to between eight and nine feet wide. Some of the options that I was asked to take a look at were a round planter. From a professional standpoint, I think that's probably too small to, for the health of the tree. We're wanting something that's going to be long-established, that's not going to have to be replaced in a matter of five to 10 years. I think it's going to cause undue stress on the trees. To be in a planter that small, the roots will become bound within the size of the planter. The larger rectangle would provide that additional space for the root growth.
Very good. Anything else, Paul?
One last item.
Please.
Culture stone versus brick. From a professional standpoint, I think that having a brick site on the planters, it would, it would just kind of fade into the background. You really wouldn't, you wouldn't notice it as opposed to having the cultured stone.
Okay. Excellent. Well, I know that this group has invested a lot of time and energy and takes the design features of our downtown streetscape very seriously. So let me start at this end of the dais, and I'll ask everyone if they have questions or comments for Paul. Ms. Cybo Koenig, do you have any questions, comments at this time?
I don't for Paul.
Okay. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just clarification. So we've eliminated all the trees except for one on each corner now.
There is one on each corner, correct.
So we currently had three, so now we're just going to have one.
Three that are, they're really close together, yes.
Okay. Just from my perspective, I like that green, but I think, suspect it's partially to be able to see the buildings better. Is that the idea? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Mayor Protem, over.
I understand that ratio that you're talking about, 1 to 1.61. And I also like the idea that we're moving towards perhaps this rectangular structure, and we've got it pulled back from the sidewalk. I'd like to see it pulled back a bit more than the 16 inches, though, which would then end up reducing its dimensions a bit more, because thinking of people sitting on that planter box, which is what we want people to do.
Yes.
They are likely going to be out more than 16 inches from the front edge of that planter box, just because they can't sit all the way back, for one thing. And then if they've got packages, or strollers, or dogs, or whatever. So I'd be more comfortable if it was pulled back a bit more. And then, just because I can't remember, what is the term that you use for that space right next to buildings where people don't walk?
It's a shy zone.
Shy zone. That was it. Yep. Couldn't remember that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Tahar?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Roth?
I want to thank Paul for doing the elevation drawings, so we can get a better concept of what's going on.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Dillon?
I have a couple of comments.
Please.
Currently, the 20 by 10 space encompasses two trees. If you were to look at the way that it's laid out there, there's two great, two trees. Do we actually need a planter that's that big for one tree?
Well, the footings of the seat wall extend down to 42 inches, so that really limits where the roots are going to be able to grow before they hit a barrier. And while they will tend to go down some, it's better to have a greater horizontal area where they can expand.
But do you feel the proportion's going to be, right now, there's two mature trees in that space.
Yes.
And you're talking about replacing it with one stick tree? That's going to take 25 years to reach the size of one of the trees that's there now. The scale seems like it's going to be completely off, that space with one stick tree.
I understand. And one of the things that we were looking at is providing additional space for bike racks and seating, not associated with the planter, but seats, bike racks, places for tables and chairs for people to sit at the restaurants. So that space was left open for those reasons.
Okay, I think we're talking, I'm thinking, why is it so big that it's too big of a space for what it is?
For the single tree.
For the single tree.
And the additional plantings.
Right. And my, is what would be the smallest-sized planter that we could have for a single size, for a single tree?
12 by 10.
Okay. Is there a reason why we're not going smaller, then? I mean, that's another eight feet.
Yeah.
If we're going from 12 to 20 feet.
What you have in front of you is 16 feet long.
Okay.
So it would be four feet.
It would be an additional four feet.
Yes. And again, it's going back to the golden ratio of what is aesthetically pleasing, and that's the reason behind the size and the shape of the rectangle right now.
But will it be aesthetically pleasing in 20 years when the tree matures? I mean, is it going to, at this point, I just don't understand how a small tree in that big planter...
Well, it's going, and when it goes in, it's going to be 15 feet tall and probably, it'll have a caliper of four inches. So it's going to be a good-sized tree.
No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Paul, why don't you hang tight, unless, are there additional questions for Paul, please? Mr. Rhodes?
Not a question, but just a statement here is, I tend to agree with Paul about not using brick on the faces of those planters, because they would tend to just disappear into the sidewalk. But I don't know that I like the kind of sandstone look either.
Okay. There are different options available with the cultured stone.
I think some difference in materials is good.
There are different cut patterns, different colors that are available.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything, any additional comments, questions for Paul? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just from my perspective, looking at the size of the planter, I'm concerned about whatever tree we put in there has significant room to grow, because it's going to push against whatever's there and potentially crack or damage something in 15 years.
It's, it's...
If it's too small.
12 inches of concrete wall that is going to be pushing against, so it'll be okay. It's all reinforced.
I've seen what trees have done in uptown. It's cracked a number of sidewalks that are greater than six or eight inches. So that's why I agree with a reasonable size. You can't make it too small. That's my concern.
Okay.
Okay. Paul, why don't you hang tight? Riley, Rebecca, do you have any comments you'd like to share? I don't want to put you on the spot, but we would, we know that you also worked hard on this initiative and project, and we would appreciate hearing your perspectives.
I, I'm Rebecca Schneider. I'm the design team chair, and Riley is the president of Main Street, as you all know. I don't know that we have anything specific additional to come on. I did not see Paul's response to you about his rationale for why he selected, what he selected, or his additional drawings. And that's kind of the hard part about this process, is we get the drawings. And it's different than the process before where we were selecting between options. We were just looking at the drawing and commenting our thoughts. I do agree with Mr. Rhodes' comment that it doesn't have to be brick around this. We were just suggesting that because we don't have any information about what is, what's possible. But we did feel that the suggested material, the design team did a streetscape tour last year. We toured Belleville, Ypsilanti, Ferndale, Northville, at least those four. I think there was a fifth. And we found that in Belleville, in Northville, they used materials that weren't organic to the setting, and it looked artificial stones and flagstones and field stones. And while that's nice and sort of fits with the now, I don't know how it's going to look in 30 years, and it sure doesn't fit the historic nature of our downtown. And I guess that's what we really wanted to get across. And there was a strong sentiment. I'm not a design expert. I can tell you what I think about things, but I'm not a design expert. So I do rely in the design team, on the people who have more expertise, people who are, have interior design experience, people who are builders. I listen to what they have to say, and then we kind of merged it all together. So that's, that was our process. And there was a very big sentiment that we need to keep things simple. And we've heard that from Michigan Main Street as well.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Riley, do you have any comments?
Yeah, one thing to add is, before our design team meeting, I did meet with the business owners on the four corners, just to kind of get their opinion. David and I actually did chalk it out, because 20 by 10 does seem a lot larger once you draw it out than when you, you talk about it. And the business owners were very concerned about the size of it. I know me and Paul were kind of standing on his corner, sorry, Paul from Breckengrill. And, you know, after looking at it, he probably will lose one to two tables in front of his building with it being 20 by 10. So that was one concern of his, is looking at, you know, how is he going to make that table up with outdoor seating? Dan is also very concerned with having it, you know, about six feet from his building in that sense, is what we measured off. It would only have a very small amount of space. His concern was maybe during like the holiday parade, when a lot of people congregate in that area, it's going to be very tight for people to walk in and out. Same concerns with Wally from Mexican Seafood Shack. It's just the size of it. Once it was drawn out, when we were talking about it, there was no concerns. But once it was shown on the actual sidewalk, it seemed very large to the business owner. So that was our main concern with downsizing it. And I think it had an influence on the design team's decision.
Let's start at the opposite end of the dais, then, to see if there's any questions or comments for our guests from Celine Main Street. Ms. Dillon, do you have any additional comments, questions at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Where are we as far as the exact size at this time to be proposed? Is this 10 by 16 the number we're dealing with?
10 by 16, yes.
Okay. That's considerably less than what was drawn out.
Yes, that is. We are on the impression of 20 by 10.
Okay.
So we apologize.
That's all. I just want to be clear that
Yeah.
We all know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Ms. Tahar? Ms. Tahar?
I would just comment, the drawing or the rendering that we're seeing now does take up the suggestion about size and your suggestion about size, design suggestion about size, to some extent at least. And also does conform to your suggestion about changing the shape back to rectangular. So just now that you have a chance to look at it, maybe you have more thoughts. But it seems like this is a better option from your... Would be a better option from your point of view, if I'm understanding your memo correctly.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Mr. Rhodes?
Just a statement, I guess. I was not able to attend this design team meeting, so I wasn't privy... I'm not privy to the back-and-forth comments that always happen in those kind of discussions. So what I'm working with is the same information everybody else is here in this written document. And I'm in agreement, basically, with most of those comments. And I think we're headed in the right direction here. We've downsized it, we've changed the shape of it. We're at least talking about the possibility of a different material on the faces of the planter. 16 is still kind of long to me. I guess I'd be happier if it was more like a 14 by... But then you get into like a nine-foot, 14 by nine, or something like that, to maintain those dimensions.
It doesn't have to be exact, but...
Yeah, something close to that. I'd like to see the front edge pulled back a little further from the pedestrian sidewalk. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Gierba?
My concern was really keeping that tree. I mean, what's concerned for me is the smaller we make this, the less green we're going to have up there, and the bigger the brick spread is. So it's going to look more and more like concrete. And really, we're going to lose what we actually have now. And unfortunately, with the loss of the trees, now we've just going to have benches and other things. We'll end up putting more planters back in there. But I'm fine with the 16 by 10, whatever. Just because of that issue, we need to keep a little more green up there than... Otherwise, we're just back to where we might as well paved it all in cement.
Anything else, Mr. Gierba?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Seibokanik?
Well, the first thing is, I would like to say that I fully support all of the recommendations that Main Street made. I think they were well thought out. I think, you know, pointing out that using cultured stone and/or that sort of artificial material in our downtown, I think it's a mistake. I think there are a lot of natural materials. I think the people who have restored their buildings downtown have done a very sensitive restoration using original type materials. They haven't, you know, covered it up in vinyl. They haven't done things that are modern to their restorations. And we expect to see more of our downtown buildings preserved and restored. So that is one thing. The other question, I guess for Paul, is on the northwest corner, you said this rectangular planter is reduced in size?
The width of it is.
And what is the exact size in relation... The other ones are 10 by 16. What is this one on the northwest corner?
It's between eight and a half and 90 wide.
And it's large enough to support a tree?
Yes, it is.
Then could they all be that wide? If that one can support a tree, then the other four... Three could support a tree also?
Yes.
So that would be a better dimension for me. It would bring it away from the sidewalk a little bit more and be a little bit smaller in scale. If that one can support it, I would suggest that all of them could. And I think... Yeah, I think that's most of it. I do also agree that going back to the rectangular design is preferred for me. The semicircle sort of came out of nowhere and surprised me, and I did not care for it at all. And I do... I want to make sure that our downtown restaurants have as much opportunity to have tables and chairs out on the streets. Maybe it's going to be a little diminished, but I don't want our business owners to think that plants are taking up their business. So I'd like to see that considered.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional thoughts for our guests from Main Street? Before I excuse them. Thank you both, appreciate it. Anything else for Paul? No? Okay. Paul, do you have any additional comments?
No other comments.
Okay, appreciate your time tonight. Any additional discussion before we vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Mayor Protam, Rhodes?
I would just say that I support Councilmember Seibokanik's comment. And I think it would be better if all four of those were of uniform dimension. And if, as she stated, the one outside of Key Bank works, then they all could, should work.
Okay. Very good. If there's nothing further, then we're going to proceed to vote on a motion that's been moved by Gierba, seconded by Seibokanik to acknowledge receipt of the December 16, 2015 memo from City Manager Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The next motion will be a motion to approve or not to approve the recommendation for raised planters as listed. Please note that you have to fill in the size, the shape, and the material whoever is inclined to move a motion.
I would move to approve the recommendation for the raised planters as listed. Planter size 14 by 9.
Okay.
Rectangular.
Yep.
Planter material... I don't know. Something other than the sandstone look. That's not very specific.
I don't mean to interrupt.
Maybe Paul could give us some...
Yeah. What was the... There's sort of an informal consensus on using a natural material?
And I can... We can select a natural stone to face the wall with as opposed to a cultured stone.
So a natural stone?
A natural stone.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me be very clear on this. Thank you, Paul. Mayor Protam, Rhodes, your motion then will be a motion to approve the recommendation for raised planters as listed. Planter size 14 by 9, planter shape rectangular, planter material natural stone.
Correct.
That is your motion.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion? There needs to be a second or the motion dies.
Second.
Second, okay.
For discussion.
Please, that's all I needed. So it's been seconded by Councilwoman Seibokanik. Mr. Rhodes, if you have nothing further, Ms. Seibokanik is the second, or what would you like to discuss?
Just I am very comfortable with the size and the shape. Natural stone or brick? I would like that considered, the brick, to be considered in that. But that would be my preference.
Okay. Are you amenable to...
There would be a brick in a contrasting color or...
It could be. It could be. I could support that.
Natural brick or contrast... Or natural stone or contrasting brick? Is that what you'd be looking for?
Could we leave this blank and pick it out another time? Let me actually see what is available.
Yeah, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. First, a couple of things I might... First, as far as... Part of this contrasting is for the pedestrian fairness, right, to slow down. So if it becomes, as we talked about, kind of lost in the same brick colors, it may not be as... You may not see it as well. And so thus, it may not... You may not... We may not get the benefit of this as much as we would expect to or hope to with as far as traffic calming. And then as far as Mr. Roth's question, we can change out, but I mean, we're... AECOM has already submitted their drawings to MDOT. So any change is most likely going to occur after it's been let. And we're going to have to work with the contractor on different... Because we certainly don't want to slow down the process, the bidding process.
Actually, let me just make a quick comment. And I certainly, with all due respect to Councilwoman Seibokanik, I understand your point of view and your preference here. Unless staff or our guests from AECOM corrects me, I think natural stone, the way it is worded in the motion, leaves this somewhat open-ended.
It is, that is open-ended.
With a variety of options yet to be chosen from. So I'm very comfortable with its worded, the way it is. The one thing I may take issue with is rectangular. But I think rectangular planters are certainly better than semicircular. So if this is what it takes to move this issue forward and get this motion approved by council, I'm very amenable.
Agreed.
Okay? Any additional discussion on this? Ms. Tahar, please.
Yeah, I would just comment that it was... I was... It's very useful to have the additional information Mr. Campbell just provided about one of the purposes of the planters is traffic calming. So that as a rationale for not using brick on the planter makes a lot of sense to me because that traffic calming has been, for many of us, one of the main reasons for doing all of this.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Any additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Dillon, please.
I have a question. Will there be a cost difference between going from a natural stone to a brick?
There will be a cost difference between the cultured stone and either the natural stone or the brick, yes.
Would you have an estimate?
Well, we've cut the size on this significantly, so the cost savings should be flipped. So it really wouldn't be the difference.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? No, then I'll repeat the motion just so we're very clear. It's been moved by Rhodes, seconded by Seibokanik to approve the recommendation for raised planters as listed. Planter size 14 by 9, planter shape rectangular, planter material natural stone. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Paul, thank you very much. Rebecca, Riley, thank you. Staff, Mr. Campbell, thank you for your work on this. This was a big issue. I want to thank my colleagues. I know you all invested a lot of time and energy on this. It's an important aspect of Michigan Ave reconstruct, and I appreciate how seriously you took the issue. We move on to new business. And if you recall, Mr. Gierba removed an item from the consent agenda to be discussed and considered under new business. It's item C-15-90. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 9, 2015 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding fiscal year '16 first amended EDC budget to approve and adopt the fiscal year '16 first amended EDC budget as submitted. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Gierba is the second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Mr. Gierba, do you have a question or comment, sir?
Just for me, I know we have money coming in from the general fund, but again, another $4,500 contribution. What kind of maintenance are we doing this sophomore?
Ms. Bennett, you want to comment on this? Do you want to repeat that question one more time?
Yeah. In this new addition, there's a... We're going up from, I think it was $12,000 to 12.6, up to $17,000. What repair work are we doing for that?
Well, I think the... Looking at what we have spent out of that line item, so as of yet, we had a large chunk of money for $1,400 for Cadillac asphaltine that we paid for some maintenance work in the downtown area. And then we also, out of that line item, we're paying for the weeding, the Heritage Lawn Care, and then True Green for, you know, spraying and different things like that. So we're already over budget. So we're just moving more money in to cover these costs through the rest of the year.
I guess my question is, why do we need to move it into EDC? Why aren't we spending it just out of general fund?
We are trying... With the fund balances it is right now in EDC, we're trying to, until we have a further discussion on what happens with that, what... Because there's... We're trying to determine what the true cost per year of the EDC area is so that we can determine how we're going to fund it in the future since we've lost the $135,000 that we were getting. This is our first year. So we're trying to make it a general fund contribution so we see all of those costs allocated with that area in one year so that we can... If you just mingle it in with general fund. We're trying to keep it so that we can determine what the cost and expenditures for that area are so we can discuss how we handle it in the future.
So you're trying to run it as a cost center still through EDC instead of...
Absolutely. Anything that's for that area. We're trying to do it through the EDC so that we can determine what those expenses and needs are for future.
Okay. I didn't think we could continue to contribute money into the EDC. That was my concern, but I guess it's not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Any additional questions, comments regarding this motion? No, then we'll proceed to vote unless you have something further, Ms. Bennett. No? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
We'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor... Approve and adopt, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business, item 15-230. This is a series of two motions. The first... Or they're entitled attorney renewal agreements, excuse me. The first motion is to acknowledge receipt of the December 2, 2015 memo from City Manager Campbell and to approve or not to approve the three-year legal service contract with Dickinson Wright, PLLC. Is there a motion?
I will move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Mr. Campbell, do you want to go over your memo of December the 2nd?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all may recall from the work session we had prior to the December 7 regular city council meeting, we had representatives from Dickinson Wright, as well as Clark Hill, to present and discuss their proposed changes. And as you see from my memo, approximately 12% increase for Dickinson Wright for the retainer from the $106,980 to $120,000. And then the change... Excuse me, the reduction in the hours of the first 40 hours and then the first... Then the 41st hour would be 185 under the current agreement. And that's proposed a change to reduce to 25 hours and a rate of $200 per hour, the blended rate, as they call it. And then, again, proposing a three-year term. And they'd propose at the third year, an automatic 5% increase in the third year. And then for Clark Hill, again, the increase in retainer, about 13 and 1/3% from the $18,000 to... They're currently under any retainer to $20,400. And then again, they also proposing to change the structure as far as the number of hours from 40 to 25. And then other hours, the biggest change, adding collective bargaining negotiations and then other hours, the biggest change, adding collective bargaining negotiations to the ten hours, so on the eleventh hour. So, again, as I mentioned at the, at the work session, staff has been extremely pleased with, with the services they provided, the resources they provided. Certainly, there is, is an expense for the quality, but again, the, the different specialties that they have, that are literally, you know, down the hall, if you will. And, and again, with Scott Smith, certainly arguably one of the premier municipal attorneys in the state and, and region, as well as our Steve Gerard Labor Attorney, of the same caliber in his field. So staff's recommendation would be to, to proceed in, in approving this, as they've proposed.
Very good. I'll open it up to questions first. And again, I know we discussed this in some detail at a work meeting two weeks ago, but does anybody have any questions for Mr. Campell regarding his report? Mr. Gierba?
Can you explain to me, how do we carve out the piece that we subcontract for in terms of traffic court and so forth? Remember, we, they don't necessarily do that for us, but-
Prosecution misdemeanors?
Prosecution, thank you.
Right. Right. Well, they have, I mean, it's, they're still responsible to, to do that. And so that's why, and typically, it's not uncommon for, when you have a larger firm like this, that, that doesn't have an office in your community, it's not uncommon for them to contract with a local attorney, as they've done now. So at a, at a greater reduction, which of course helps in the overall cost savings for all of us. And I believe there were some points that we had exceeded the, you know, the allotment based, you know, the hundred and six nine eighty. We had exceeded that on some of these projects by, I believe Scott said somewhere on two hundred percent. So we were certainly getting a great bargain for, for that. And as far as the, the blended rates are still well below what even the associates are paid hourly. So-
I'm not so much concerned with the hourly rates, because I know, and I've talked to Mr. Rhodes, what I've recently paid for hourly rates, and they're right on the dot of that. The other concern, that I know that we currently are in process with a number of issues that are still haven't been resolved, that switching over and trying to re-educate and all that will be an issue. Just from my perspective, was understanding the type of oversight and the number of hours, just to handle the prosecution of that aspect, now that we're reducing the number of hours, is it just part of our retainer, or is that considered one of, okay?
Correct. That's part, yes. Yeah, I apologize, yeah, yes.
That's really the question I wanted to answer.
So the short answer is yes, that is part of the retainer.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for misunderstanding.
Big problem.
Yes, yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify with all these changes that are happening.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Campell? Any subsequent discussion? Mr. Roth, do you have something, sir?
At the work session, I asked as far as what the rationale was for their increase. I was not pleased with their answer. I still feel, they got us over the barrel and giving us. And they used the generalities, this is what the going rate is, and we're so great. And I would like to see that, let's, let's really give the rationale, that our rate of income that the city's generating is way out of the, way, so much smaller, and they know that. So they're eating a bigger chunk of our overall budget than ever before, and they got us between a rock and a hard place, and they give us a squeeze. And they did the nice attorney way of answering it, around the bush.
Additional discussion? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Excuse me. I'd just like to say that I move to approve this, even though it's not the rates that I would like to see, like to have seen. But I do believe that the value that we receive for working with this particular firm, our savings, I believe, exceed the cost of our contract with them. And the cost of bringing in another firm and trying to bring them up to date with things, we would, we would spend several tens of thousands of dollars, I do believe, just to do that. So I moved it to approve it. I wish it were somewhat lower than what it is, but I do recall, I believe, that Mr. Campell had said that they had negotiated the rate down from what it had originally been proposed. And so certainly, city staff is looking out for the interests of the taxpayers. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any additional discussion? Let me go to Mr. Gierba first, and then Ms. Tahr.
Again, I mean, I've mentioned the benefits that we've had, just because of what we used to have compared to what we have now have, in terms of just Monroe Street alone. The cleanup would never have occurred had we not had the cooperation of our, our law firm and the appeals that we made to our politicians and so forth in Washington and in the state. The other piece of it is, I don't disagree that we potentially ought to have a bidding on this every so often. Just the fact that we're in three years into this one, but unfortunately, there's a lot of major things that I want to see completed, meaning Monroe Street. We have legal issues that are still ongoing, and honestly, if we'd not have these illegal issues, we wouldn't have the bills that we have. Unfortunately, we can't seem to convince individuals that what they're going after is necessarily an issue that we want to be funding. Unfortunately, it's going to have to be done, and we have to defend the city. The other piece of it is, I agree that what we have here now at this point is going to be an increase. It's just going to happen. It's cost of doing business, but we've gotten the benefit out of it, and that's more the issue. It's not necessarily what we're paying, but what we actually are getting out of this in total, and we've more than effectively covered that cost over the last two years.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Ms. Tahr?
Yes, I, I was going to say, perhaps not quite so eloquently, but essentially the same thing as Mr. Gierba, that, that I believe we've received a great benefit from our association with these two law firms in the last two years. And that it's very difficult, I think, to, 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 you can't line up numbers for cost benefit analysis exactly, but I believe that, that the benefit has been great. And while the, the increase is something of a shock, one comment that was made at the work, work session that stuck with thrifty me was the, the, the comment that the new rate structure can also have the effect of making us more efficient, the city, that is, in our use of the legal services. And I know, I have confidence that, that staff is always looking for ways to make the best use of our money, so I'm hoping that the new rate structure will also have that effect.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Tahr. Anything further? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahr, to acknowledge and to approve the three-year extension with Dickinson Wright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Show of hands, I'm sorry, just so that we're clear on this. Those are the two nays? Okay, very good. The eyes have it, the motion passes. We move on then to Motion B. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December second, 2015 memo from City Manager Campell, and to approve or not to approve the two-year labor and employment legal service contract with Clark Hill, P L C. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gierba. Mr. Campell, you sort of alluded to this contract in your report, your verbal report a few moments ago. Are there any questions for Mr. Campell? Do you care to make any additional comment? No? Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay. Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahr, seconded by Gierba, to acknowledge receipt and to approve a two-year labor and employment legal service contract with Clark Hill, P L C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Same two nays? Very good. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Or not unanimously. Motion passes. Excuse me. We move on now to new business, Item fourteen dash one thirty-four. This is Celine wastewater treatment plant improvements, Phase Two Contractors Application for Payment Number Four. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December eleventh, 2015 memo from Tetra Tech, and to approve or not to approve the Celine wastewater treatment plant improvements, Phase Two Contractors Application for Payment Number Four, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Skoll, do you care to make any comment on this, sir? Or Mr. Rubel?
I just want to comment that the work is proceeding well, and they plan on wrapping up for the season in about two weeks. And they'll be back after the snow, if we ever get any snow melts.
Okay. Why don't you hang tight for just a moment, Mr. Skoll, see if there's any questions for you. Are there any questions? Mr. Gierba, please.
Because I know this is going to come up, can you just update us more on odor?
Well, we're still exploring our options. We, they have not got to the portion of the contract dealing with odor abatement, other than the preliminary cement work. We are also looking at plant procedures as a way of curtailing as much as we can. I don't know if that'll work. We may be looking at a more thorough odor study in the future. We'll have to see where we stand after we exhaust our options we have now.
I'm just asking, because I know we've had recent complaints again about it, and just didn't know if anything was, other than the sewer plant may potentially be causing this odor. I was understanding there may be some stuff being spread on fields, or something else that we're not sure about at this point.
You know, there's been people talking about other causes, but I think a majority of the odors the neighbors are smelling is coming from the plant. I'm not-
Okay. I just want to clarify that, so if that is, then we are responsible for it. Thank you.
Mr. Skoll, can I follow up on Mr. Gierba's question? Because as you know, because I think it was my office that contacted you and your subordinates, I think it was a week ago or two weeks ago now, I did get a, a number of, of comments, calls, emails, Facebook messages from people in the vicinity of the wastewater treatment plant complaining about odors that were, were pretty strong and repugnant. Can you also talk, just for the record, I know that you're considering the possibility of some sort of prefab structure to go on top of the splitter box, if I have my terminology correct?
Correct.
Which may have an impact on, on the odor issues. And then secondarily, if I recall, you had a gentleman come out from some outfit to do an evaluation on the odor scrubbers, and I believe that a proposal is forthcoming on that as well?
Yes. We had a representative do all the manufacture of the smaller scrubber, the one used to pull out from the odors from the grit tank, came out, gave it a thorough exam, and is drawing up a proposal.
Okay. Do we have any idea, any concept of when you think that proposal will be submitted?
They told me they had a two-week turnaround time, and it's, it's coming up on two weeks, on Thursday, so I'll be on them.
So imminently, okay. Very good. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I just noted that the amount of money, I thought this was for payment number four tonight.
It is.
Okay. That amount is, was payment number three, which was done last time. So if you look at the memo and the letter, pay order number four, it's one fifty-one thousand eight ninety-one fifty.
So you're saying that the-
The amount in the motion is wrong?
Oh, I see. Okay. Good catch, Mr. Rubel.
I just happened to have number three here from, from last week.
So the number should read one hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents, as enumerated in Tetra Tech's memo of December the eleventh.
Correct.
Okay. I'm assuming we can insert that number without objection. Mr. Rhodes, do you have-
The mover gratefully accepts that reduction in cost.
Ms. Dillon, I assume you have no objections?
No objections.
Okay, very good. Thank you for catching that, Mr. Rubel. Any additional comments, questions for staff? Mr. Rhodes, please.
I did have one additional question for Mr. Skoll.
Please.
Along the lines of the, the odor control you had mentioned, Bob, that the current contract, the current work to be done down there includes some things which may be of assistance in odor control, along with some procedures that you have-
Yes.
-to modify. And I wonder if you have a timeframe for that?
I believe the odor scrubber portion's not going in until May, way after they come back to start working. The cement work was poured, it's curing. They're going to put an odor collection, a larger odor collection system over the secondary digester, as well as the subject receiving station. As far as the splitter box, most of that's going to be done in-house. So we'll do that as soon as the weather clears up. We're looking at some procedural changes that may limit the odor that's going, emanating from that source. So maybe that won't be necessary, but we're looking into it.
Okay, so it sounds like it may be next summer before we really know if what we're currently trying to do works.
Hopefully before, then hopefully in the spring.
Okay.
And to, to follow up on that, Mr. Rhodes, what I'll recommend is that as soon as you get a proposal regarding the odor scrubbers, I'd like that at a minimum included on a council agenda as a discussion item.
Absolutely.
Because the, the quicker we can act on that, I think the, the better, for, for all involved and all who are concerned about this issue. Mr. Gierba?
Just, you had mentioned something about a replacement of a cover and so forth. Is there going to be a period in time where it's going to get worse?
Actually, during the construction portion, when they do work on the septic receiving station, they will have to replace the roof, that's part of the construction. And there is, we're going to clean it out as best we can, but there is a possibility.
Okay. I do, when that happens, I think we just need to be very proactive in letting our neighbors knowing that.
Anything else for Mr. Skoll? Ms. Dillon?
I have one question. There's been a lot of comments made about sludge intake. Is there a way to evaluate the smell that's coming from that to either affirm or put to rest that issue?
Well, there is concern about the septic receiving station causing the odor. We are always looking at that, but I don't think that's really the issue, because for the most part, the septic receiving station had been shut down this year due to the construction and the, the bad weather. So it may contribute somewhat, but we limit the hours of operation of the station to three o'clock in the afternoon, in order to eliminate any smell that may be there, coming from there. We're checking all our options.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you, just to stay on that point, I don't want to be very emphatic on this, because I've communicated this to a number of residents, and you and I have spoken about this. It was, you correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, it was almost a calendar year that we did not accept outside.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it had, close to eleven months.
Very good. Okay.
Are we accepting it now?
We are, but at a reduced rate. We're, I lowered the limit to ten thousand gallons per day, in order to allow enough room for sludge handling that's in-house generated.
And that's a-
So we can be pumped out.
And that's a very recent change, that you just started accepting?
Correct, it is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skoll. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote then. Note the number change at the end of the motion, and again, thank you, Mr. Rubel, for catching that. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The last action item of the evening is fifteen dash two thirty-one. This is burial rights resolution and resi- resi- reds, red, boy, I'm getting really tongue, why don't you help me with that?
Registration.
Registration agreement, excuse me. And I want to note that this is different than the policy and procedure changes that the clerk's office emailed you about, I think, last week. Those will be coming up on a future council agenda meeting. We do want to talk to Mr. Roth about that, since he missed the last cemetery task force meeting, and because he's going to be the new citizen representative on that group. And we also want to communicate proactively to the Cemetery Board of Appeals. So I just wanted to clear that up, in case there was any confusion. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December tenth, 2015 memo from Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the Bureau Rights Resolution and Registration Agreement.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you. Ms. Tahr, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rhodes. Do you care to make any comment, Clerk Royal?
I'll just answer any questions, if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Any questions for our city clerk? Mr. Gierba?
So is, this is a whole new agreement language in a proposal that we will be handing going forward? Because I know there's other individuals that may have burial rights and things that we would like to transfer.
Correct. Well, this is somebody who does not have, oh, sorry. This is somebody who has lineage of, that he can prove that his ancestors own this, but it was not in a will or anything handed down. So he is attempting to gain ownership of this crypt. And by all means, it looks like he is the owner of the crypt, and he should, he's the rightful owner. But we don't have any proof. This will keep us from being in illegal hot water if we have this.
So any dispute that should, it could arise, if there was other, because of this going back so far, father, relatives, and so forth came forward.
It would be-
Stays outside of us.
Right. He would, he would have to deal with those himself.
Okay.
Mr. Rhodes, do you have a question or comment, sir?
No, mine, mine have been answered. Thank you.
All right, very good. Anything else? Mr. Roth?
Is this agreement just for this particular inquiry, or is it something that's going to be used going forward?
This would be used for any future inquiries. This is something that is used at other, with other municipalities for this type of situation. It's just that we haven't had this before.
And this is not only the mausoleum, it's everything that we have, far as other burial sites?
Correct.
Just want to be sure it's all inclusive.
Yes, it's for anything.
And it's equal and fair to everybody.
Right.
But thank you.
I would also note that I was in contact with the petitioner, whose name is, of course, enumerated in the memo some time ago. And he was extremely complimentary of Clerk Royal and Chief Deputy Clerk Bloom for their assistance and how thorough and professional they were. So I wanted to share that for the record, and very pleased with the treatment that he received from the city of Celine, overall. So if there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Tahr, seconded by Rhodes, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda, Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. Mayor Protem Rhodes?
I have two Commissions to report on this evening. The first is Parks Commission, and I think as most folks know, we, they are in the midst of updating their master plan for parks and recreation. And public comments are, are still available to be, or comment can, the public can still provide comments on that, and it will come to council sometime, I believe, in January for first reading. One of the, the big items that came up out of that was the safety of crossing over from Mill Pond Park to Curtis Park. And the general feeling was that even with the changes that are intended to happen as part of the Michigan Avenue makeover, which would provide sidewalks along Michigan Avenue on the north side, the general feeling was that most people will still attempt to cross Michigan Avenue directly from one side to the other, and not avail themselves of the sidewalk, which would require walking east to an island, and then crossing over, and then coming back west again on the other side. Sort of goes against the nature of most folks. And so there's, there's a lot of concern about the safety of, of people crossing over. And the Parks Commission would, would like for the city to consider as quickly as it could possibly happen, providing a, perhaps a pedestrian crossing there between those two parks. And we understand that it's too late to incorporate that into the current Michigan Avenue makeover activity that's, that's about to start. But Parks Commission would like to see an effort made to, to do something down there to make it more safe.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor Protem Rhodes. I spoke to council, former council member Jim Peters, who's a current Parks Commission member. He and I had lunch last week to discuss this and a number of other issues. And he'll be coming to a January council meeting to, to discuss this further.
Okay. And then, before I leave Parks, I am leaving Parks, as, as the council liaison, and I've enjoyed working with that group for the past year. Next report is on the Environmental Commission. They are going to purchase some four-minute shower timers at a greatly reduced rate. Then we'll be handing those out at various events that the Environmental Commission staffs, to help people get used to the idea of- to help people get used to the idea of not having to take a 10-minute shower necessarily. So it's four minutes, but it's just a little timer. It doesn't turn the water off. It's just like those little hourglass things that sand moves through. So visual reminder of when four minutes are up. The Christmas light recycling effort that was recently started, and there's the recycle bin out in a foyer of City Hall, has been quite successful. There's about, almost two full containers of lights have been turned in for recycling. There's discussion beginning with a scout about the possibility of installing a rain garden down in Milpon Park. The storm drain markers, Mr. Skoll is working with that to get some more of those markers to put on the various storm drains around town to remind people that those drains empty directly into the, into the waterways. And then Environmental Commission also supported the Planning Commission's efforts to look at reducing the parking requirements for, for multi-use areas on the assumption, rightly so, that reducing non-pervious areas will help with, control the water runoff. And then last of all, we'd like to thank Mary Hess for her years of service on Environmental Commission. She has elected not to be appointed to that commission again next year, so we thank her for her service.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Additional Commission Committee or Task Force reports. Now, I would just note that our efforts to fill vacancies on boards and commissions is going very well. I'm pleased to report that we have two applications that, and two individuals that I've, I've communicated with, who will be occupying the vacancies that are currently on Tifa and EDC. We also filled a vacancy on Parks recently, have vacancies filled on ZBA and planning. However, I am still in need of a few people, potentially a few people, for the Arts and Culture Committee. And I have one vacancy on HDC, as well as one that Mr. Rhodes just referenced on environmental, although I think there may be one or two applications that are forthcoming. So the point of all this is please do what you can to help me promote those vacancies. It's a great way for people to serve the community. And we need eager and enthusiastic people to, to volunteer for those boards and commissions. And I would also note that if we cannot accommodate your interest, we will keep your application on file. And when a vacancy becomes available, or when a position becomes available, excuse me, we will, we will consider appointing you, so. If there are no additional committee, commission, or task force reports, how about other announcements? Ms. Tahar?
Yes, I've recently learned about this year's Empty Bowls Project at Saline High School. This will be the, the fifth such event. It's going to be on Thursday, February 4th. So you can mark your calendars. And the reason I'm mentioning it tonight is it will have an additional feature this year tied to the Sesquicentennial. One of the art teachers, whose name I did not write down, so I'm not sure which one of, which art teacher in the schools it was, proposed a community art project installation to be done along with the Empty Bowls Project. They're going to ask for students and parents to help build an art project out of cans that outline the Saline City downtown skyline in the high school commons. And I've heard it, they're going to take pictures and then outline the skyline on the wall of the commons and, and then build the skyline with cans in the days leading up to the event. So it will be there to see and enjoy during the event, so. Perhaps the first Sesquicentennial event of 2016.
Very cool. Other reports or announcements? No, then we'll move on to perhaps a brief update on the strategic plan. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the mayor said, brief, so just a handful of updates. So under Goal One, maintain and grow healthy center. Objective One, promote Saline's heritage. Under Historic District Commission, Sesquicentennial Task Force working on a smartphone app for the walking trail. And still, Goal One, Objective Two, expand the perceived downtown area. And we talked about this, and I think, Mr. Rhodes may have actually mentioned this at the December 7th meeting possibly, if I remember correctly. But the community ed will be keeping, if we do get snow, when we get snow, they'll be keeping the, the walkway at Henny Field plowed in conjunction with Heritage Lawn Care, picking up the balance. And then, community ed is increasing the potential usage of the field by offering to other programmings that they do on an annual basis at a minimum. And then, as also part of that, Rec Center is working with the Eagle, an Eagle Scout to promote a wayfinding signage, or wayfinding signage at Henny Field that would incorporate showing where the, where the walkway that comes out into this, joins the sidewalk on North Ann Arbor Street and goes into Henny Field. And then also signage to, potential signage to show direction where the depot museum is at. So, and one other. This is Goal Two, Community Life Development. Objective Three, Art, Culture, Community Events Venue, One-Year Task. Recently completed the installation of the five free little libraries, City Hall, Milpon Park, Rizdon Park, Brecken Park, and Rec Center. So that is a quick update.
Any questions for City Manager Campbell regarding the strategic plan? No? Okay. Then we move on to the second to last discussion item HB 5016, HB 4423 to 27, and Senate Bill 571. Obviously, we've heard a pretty detailed report and explanation from Representative Driscoll regarding these pieces of legislation. There was a memo in your packet from City Manager Campbell. Let me stick on HB 5016 and HB 4423 to 27 first. At this juncture, is there any objection from the DAIS and/or from council members-elect if we draft some resolutions opposing these bills and have them on some upcoming council agendas?
I would support such a resolution.
Okay, I'm assuming, Mr. Gearbox, you're the one who brought this up initially. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, very much.
Okay, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay. Mr., okay, very good. And then as it relates to Senate Bill 571, because time is really of the essence, there is a letter on the DAIS dated December the 22nd, which I did not draft, I want to be very clear. This was provided by Dickinson Wright. At this point, the bill has been passed by the House, it's been passed by the Senate. It either has been presented to the governor or that presentation is forthcoming. And it's really up to him whether he'll choose to sign it or veto the legislation. So he's the only person we can, we can influence at this juncture. I think it's important to, to send a letter to his office. The draft that Scott initially proposed was written just for myself, the mayor, to sign. I think it's far more effective to have everyone on council and the council members-elect sign it. So as you can see in the draft that was provided, space for each one of your names was, was included. I have one correction, and it's actually in the first line of the letter. The legislature recently enacted, the legislature doesn't enact unless they override a veto, so an act needs to be changed to pass. And then Councilmember Rhodes suggested, also on the first page, under the sentence that, that reads, "We have a number of thoughts and concerns about this provision. Among them are the following: He would prefer to strike Items One and Items Two and then bump up the following, well, numbers three through 11." Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm comfortable with keeping one and two in, but if removing them is what, what is required to, to get everyone to, to agree that this is a, a, a good letter that, that appropriately states our concerns, then that's fine with me as well. But I would welcome additional thoughts from, from the DAIS.
I think we need to keep number two.
Keep number two?
Because if it's good for the cities, it should be good for the state.
Okay.
And that's what it's trying to say.
Yeah, let's stick on Item One, that is, everyone at a minimum comfortable with removing Item One?
Yeah, it's kind of accusatory, that doesn't really start a tone.
Mr. Rhodes would obviously prefer to have Item Two removed. Mr. Roth and I are, are more comfortable keeping it in. How does, how does the rest of the group feel? Can I start with you, Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig?
You know, I, I guess it's okay. It does come off a little bit, maybe, maybe it's the wording of it.
Okay.
From the wrong angle.
Okay. Mr. Gearbox, what are your thoughts?
I like the idea of it, and I agree, not the way it's written, it should be something to affect of, it's the expectation, again, here we are of the state applying two different standards, which is typical for the current legislature to do. And I'm going to be clear on that, in my own opinion. So however we could reword that sentence to say, if we're, if it, if it benefits the state, if it benefits local government, why does it not have a similar situation for the state? Somehow to word it differently.
If it, if it's beneficial to local governments, why does it, why are, why is it not applied to the state of Michigan?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Sibyl Koenig, are you, you prefer that verbiage?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, would you be?
I'm more comfortable with that change also.
Okay. Mr. Roth, I'm assuming you'd be good with that?
Yes, it's keeping the same idea.
Yep, okay. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. CEO and Ms. McLown, did you see the letter that was emailed out earlier today? Why don't you come forward to the DAIS, both of you? I'm happy to relinquish my copy if you don't mind sharing it. I can share with the clerk. So we've, again, we've changed the word enacted to passed. We've, we've eliminated Item One. We've changed the verbiage in Item Two. And then, of course, all those numbers will be bumped up. Are there other changes that members of council or council members-elect would recommend?
I don't know if, do we really need that second sentence in Number Three? So this provision really isn't needed to prevent a misuse of local funds?
You could probably eliminate that.
Yeah, I don't see this as much as local use of, misuse of local funds. I see it more as a, an attempt to try and not educate the public, which has been the whole role of this current legislation.
So just to be clear, Mr. Gearbox, you would recommend striking the second sentence in, in what is currently enumerated as Item Three? I don't have any objection to that. Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
If I may, certainly, I mean, I'm amiable to anything, but that you all agree on, but, I mean, that's part of the, I mean, that's under the guise of this legislation.
Is it saying a misuse of local funds?
Right, I mean, that's under the guise of the, the local, the local governments aren't being responsible in using their funds and trying to use them inappropriately. And as later down towards the end, I think it talks about if, if in fact there are, if there is a bad player or bad players, then, then take appropriate action against them, don't.
I understand that, Mr. Campbell, but I actually, in looking at that, I think that second sentence is somewhat redundant. That's my opinion, I don't know about Mr. Gearbox.
It's like, it's like the other ones are a little more, it's so accusatory, which I don't disagree, but it's not in the right way to, they're basically assuming that we're going to misuse the funds.
Right.
And if you wanted to say it that word directly, from the fact that the assumption of this is that local government is already misusing these funds is inappropriate.
I just, I think that the first sentence of, of Three is, is more powerful by itself.
Okay, that's fine.
That's my preference.
I agree.
But again, that's one of those issues, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight that much about it if people want to include it, I'm still happy to sign the letter. Are there any other changes that, that people would recommend? Council members or council members-elect would recommend, excuse me? All right, then what I would like to do is this, because as I mentioned earlier, time is, is, is of the essence, that's not hyperbole. Immediately following the meeting, the clerk will make the changes. And if you could stick around to sign it, we'd like to get it in the mail, either later this evening or first thing tomorrow. Okay? Comfortable with that? Okay, very good, excellent. Anything further on those pieces of legislation?
Would the revised letter also be faxed up?
Yes.
Because otherwise he might sign it by the time he gets the letter.
Yep.
He might sign it anyway.
We fax it and mail it.
Can it be?
Yep, please, Mr. Rhodes.
Can it be emailed to all members of the legislature? Thank you.
If there's nothing further, but we'll end on a, on a light note. I would ask that council members Roth and Sibyl Koenig join me at the podium. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to preface with the bad news. The bad news is these two deserve and will be receiving some very nice plaques that have been ordered by our clerk's department, specifically Chief Deputy Clerk Bloom. And I think you'll be really touched and hopefully honored to receive them. The bad news is, as I alluded to just a moment ago, they're not ready yet. There was a bit of a snafu. So we tried to rectify that today, but we were unsuccessful. So in the absence of your plaques, I wanted to present each of you with a certificate that mirrors what you'll be receiving. And what I would like to do is invite both of you back to our first council meeting in January to receive the plaques. I've been assured by the clerk's department, specifically Ms. Bloom, that they will be ready. But a few remarks today, because as you all know, this is the last council meeting for Councilmember Roth and Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig. And let me start with, with Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig. I first got to know Terry when she was a council member in 2006 and 2007, before my term as a council member, let alone my term as mayor began. And I've always been impressed by her dedication, her thoughtfulness, her intelligence. When she speaks, she always says something that intrigues me, and she's always very well informed. Now, the, the good news is, we're, the bad news is, of course, we're losing her from council. The good news is she is still going to be deeply involved in the community. She's agreed to take council member-elect CEO spot on the planning commission. And I know she'll do an excellent job. And she's currently employed by the Saline Area Chamber of Commerce. And it, as is true with everything that Terry does, she just excels, and I know she does a fabulous job. So we wish you the very best, and thank you for your years of service on Saline City Council. Now, Jim Roth, I regrettably missed out on having him as a teacher. If he had stayed around another five or six years, I might have had the honor of having him as an educator at Saline High School. But his reputation lingered, and it lingered in a good way. He was one of the high school's most dedicated staff members. He is very passionate about all the things that he does. And this, the plaque that you'll be receiving, Jim, talks about your lifetime of dedication, leadership, and commitment to the Saline community. And that, that really is true. Since you came here in what year, 1965?
Seven.
Seven, excuse me. Jim has been involved in the community in innumerable ways. And he's one of the people that has helped make Saline the place it is. And we thank you for your service. Jim is also not going far, although we're losing him from city council, as I mentioned earlier. He is going to be the new citizen-at-large on the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force. He is going to remain on the Sesquicentennial Task Force. And specifically related to that assignment, you will, you shall be, you will be, excuse me, expecting great things from Mr. Roth. He is heading up the Book Committee, which is going to be producing a really wonderful book, celebrating our history and also looking forward to our, our future as a community. So, Jim, we thank you for your lifetime of service to the Saline area, specifically your service on city council. We will, we will miss you, but we know we can continue rely on you for, for leadership and service in the Saline community. Thank you very much, my friend. And again, please mark your calendars, because we would like you to, to join us on the 4th for our first meeting in 2016. If there's nothing further, under the discussion portion of our agenda, we come to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question a city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There any citizen comments?
My name's, you probably know John Hillary, I live at 213 Sheffield. And I did have something to say when I first came up and, but as I watched the proceedings- And I did have something to say when I first came up, and, but as I watched the proceedings here, I'm not sure that I want to continue to say it, but I think the reason for that is, is that I sat here and watched the proceedings, I realized that I think it would help if all the city employees, police department employees, could come and watch this and realize what takes place here. I think there's a lot of communication gap between what takes place here and what's talked about in the departments. And, I mean, obviously, I've been retired now for six years, but in that, and I know that was mentioned in Mr. Hess's report, and I think that that would be a good thing to do, because what I plan to say is that I do still think that his report is an attempt to cover up what's taking place in the police department, and I think it needs to be brought to the public, and there needs to be some public explanation of what's happened there and what is happening there. And I also, what I intended to say is that, besides that part of it, that it, it looks like, and I say it looks like, almost a kickback scheme when you have the police chief, his immediate reaction to the report is a recommendation to buy products and services from the company that Mr. Hess works for. And I would say that that undermines his objectivity in making that report. He is advocating rewriting the policies and procedures of the police department, and at the same time, he's an employee of a company that does just that. So I think that undermines the objectivity that his report was supposed to have. It definitely appears to me like there was some kind of cooperation, something that took place there, that he is making a pitch, more or less with his report, to bring business to his company. So I think that that's something that ought to be addressed, and I think it casts a shadow over that whole report, that he is an employee of a company that rewrites policies and procedures, and that's exactly what he's advocating in his report. So if he was contracted, he gave you a cut rate on the report in the expectation of receiving revenues from performing services that you're going to buy from him, I think that's a big shadow on that report. Thank you.
Any additional citizen comments? Please.
Good evening. Jack CEO, 426 Amherst Circle. I live in a neighborhood where we have a number of street plantings, Bradford pear trees that shed their leaves late in the season. So in many years in the past, leaves have fallen late, we've raked them to the street late in the season. Some years, DPW has picked them up, some years they have not. And this year, because it's been as dry as it's been and no snow and so on, a number of neighbors have taken advantage of the little better weather we've enjoyed to rake those into the street. And I noticed a week and a half or so ago that many, many of them had begun to accumulate in the street, and it was some trepidation that I considered maybe I should call DPW because of my position now as a councilperson-elect, and not wanting to exert undue influence, I did not make that call, whereas in years past I may have. So you can imagine my great surprise when I came home from work last week and found that DPW had been there and completely cleaned up the streets. So I wanted to come before this group and commend the work of those people. I understand that a lot of what they do is subject to the vagaries of the weather in Michigan, especially this time of year, but they did an excellent job, and I was very pleased to see that they did it. And that was one of the unaccounted-for, maybe downsides of becoming councilmember-elect, was that you don't feel nearly the freedom to engage the staff as you did before. So thank you to those folks, I commend them for a job well done.
Thank you. Additional public comments? Please.
My name is John Olson, and I wanted to take this opportunity to come before council and officially introduce myself as the new Chamber Director for the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. I'll be filling art shoes, which are some large shoes to fill. In that note, I also wanted to say that, you know, as you know, the Chamber puts on the parade every year, and we had another wonderful parade. Treasure Trails, the tree lighting, they were all well-attended. As a matter of fact, the Treasure Trails had almost double what we had last year, and was the largest group of kids who ever went before a very tired Santa. And it was, it was actually, you know, a wonderful event. I want to thank our sponsors, thank our volunteers, and in particular, I want to thank, you know, the City of Celine for helping us out, and the, single out the DPW and the Police Department that always step up. I volunteered for the parade for a number of years, and they're always there, and they always have phone numbers for us if we have a problem, and they do a wonderful job every year. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional citizen comments? Well, we thank you all for your attendance and your comments this evening. You know, John, Mr. Olson, we congratulate you on your, on your new appointment. We know that you'll do a tremendous job. You know, I would echo comments I made earlier relating to Councilmembers Sibyl Koenig and Roth, another individual who's devoted countless hours and years to making the community a better place. And we know that your leadership will greatly benefit Celine, but most specifically the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. So again, congratulations on behalf of City Council and everyone here at the City of Celine. Is there anything else to be brought forward this evening? Ms. Sibyl Koenig, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to say thank you to the City of Celine and to my fellow council members. It's been an honor to be on council this last term, and I'm excited for Heidi and Jack to join this group, and I feel very honored to have been a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'll say ditto.
Very good. Well, with that, regardless of whatever holiday you celebrate, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, wishing everyone in the Celine community a very joyous, safe, and healthy holiday season. Happy New Year, and I will see you all again on the fourth at our first council meeting of the year. And then our next meeting is the following week, the 11th, both meetings beginning at 7:30. We have no absences to excuse this evening, so the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, is it already nine? Is that right? 9:27 PM?
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Perfect. Moved by Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig, seconded by Councilmember Roth. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Aye. Or say nay. This meeting is adjourned.